Welcome everybody to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting, September 28th, 2023. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the digital world, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting, September 28th, 2023. In attendance on Zoom, we have the Sheriff's Department and Captain Mann and I don't.
That's Captain Walsh.
Captain Walsh, okay. And then I have Andrew Gates and Robert Burnier and I don't know who's their phone.
Call in number?
It's just a call in number. I don't know if there's any, maybe we have Jason Henry that just popped in and in the room. Yeah.
Remember the public?
Oh, yeah, sometimes you go like.
All right, in the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kowalski, we have Leila, we have Commissioner Gado, Commissioner McCoy, and so. Commissioner Chiracello. And let's start the meeting with a opening for a fire alarm testing.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and refer them with a recognition.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Not. Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, well, on the consensus agenda.
Look at me split. I want to approve the September 21st, 2023, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, is there any additions, subtraction, anything correction?
Yeah, but the non-public minutes were incomplete.
Okay.
They need some additional verbiage in them. We, what's not recorded is when you asked Leila to step out. We had a discussion about something and I'm a little foggy on what it was, but I'm sure you remember.
Yes.
There should be a sentence or two of what we, because these minutes have not been sealed. Is that correct? These non-public minutes, we decided did not need to be sealed.
Yeah.
But we're missing, it says that you left and then we adjourned and we had a discussion and we adjourned, so it's obvious something's.
Yeah, and obviously, there was no way for Leila to understand that was completely.
Yeah, I mean.
So why don't we table the non-public portion and then we'll get those notes for the next time around and approve the minutes of the rigging one.
That's fine.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, do you want to do those minutes since you're the one who left?
The clerks usually the one who does it, but I mean, if you want me to.
I think because it was your non-public that you wanted to bring towards.
That's fine, I can.
Just a few seconds since that's not.
Really great, so it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, great. So I moved to, I'm gonna, we're gonna table the, I'm going to amend my motion to table the non-public meeting minutes and approve the public meeting minutes from September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on that motion, Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado? Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Right. Now on to tables.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,327,460.63 for the period ending September 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. On to, um, Commissioner twelve.
Four. Let's see, the jail population is at 151 in-house and 16 out of house. We have 12 females. So there are two different reasons why people may be placed at a different facility. Obviously, the women are not housed in our facility. So that 12 women are housed other, outside the facility at other jails, usually Carroll County. We also have, and sometimes there's some exchange because of conflict or there are certain reasons that other, some of the male inmates are housed outside. So we have additional four males housed outside of the facility. I know that maybe you'll cover some of, there's some overlap, Commissioner Chiracello, but the shower project is really going well and nearing completion. So that's good. And otherwise, businesses usual, still doing well with the, in terms of applications and going through the process for hiring more CEOs. The delay is because they have to do a poly and background. And the individual who does the poly exams are, is a rampage. The, you'll notice from, we have in our motions today to approve the Medicaid cost report. And so that has been concluded. So that's a really good thing for the end of the fiscal year in June. That was a lot of work and a lot of preparation. And so it's a nice big checkbox there. Interestingly, so over long-term care, yesterday we had, and this is kind of an overlap of finance and long-term care. 10 senators and state reps came to the facility to get a tour of long-term care and understand. And they got, it was a thank you to Jason, Allison, Chuck, Jessica, who gave presentations and sort of a tour and explained what's happening here at long-term care. This is so important because these are the individuals that are passing legislation that affects us directly. So the more education we can do, the more they can understand the cost of, for instance, the Medicaid reimbursement rates. And coupled compared to the services we offer, both in assisted living and in long-term care, this is incredibly valuable. So I know that that, that tour was three hours plus. So it was, it was a significant amount of time, but we, I think, I speak for all the commissioners in that we appreciate all your efforts tremendously because that education is invaluable. So.
Did you say a three-hour tour?
Well, there was also presentations here and.
It's like dealing with an island.
This weekend on Sunday is the Alzheimer's Walk and fundraiser. And there's been a lot of efforts at long-term care to raise money. Alzheimer's Walk is going to be in Portsmouth on Sunday for anyone who still wants to jump on, jump in. And just to highlight, we've seen a lot of the great work from Jessica Wendell in terms of a lot of the materials she's producing and some presentations. And she was just named top 20 to watch for by Seacoast Media Group. It's a celebrating young professionals on the Seacoast. So I think time and time again, we see county personnel being honored or given awards for their excellence. And it just is yet another example of the great work that's happening at Rockingham County.
Right. Congratulations, Jessica.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
Commissioner Gado? I have nothing to report. All is well in the registry and deeds in the county attorney's office.
Okay. And for me, I really don't, I mean, I'm just going to allow my department heads to say everything they say. I mean, I know that they sent all of their busy stuff to all of us. So women likely have read it, but I'll let them bring it up in the meeting. So with that, let's go on to what was facilities operation, the bid waiver request for Honeywell.
I move to approve the Honeywell International proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of $125,000 for the supply installation and integration of 13 new cameras in the jail as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
This is single source. So that's why we've used a Honeywell throughout the system. I think this is, although obviously it's expensive, it's really.
We have no choice.
The ROI on it is very high. So. Much things about.
Further discussion. If not, on the motion, Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you. I move to approve the Medicaid cost report for fiscal year end, June 30th, 2023, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussions? Not on the motion, Commissioner.
Oh, do, is there?
Well, it does, it does show that, you know, increasing costs, revenue, not keeping pays. So as, so the good news is, and I discussed this in our little tour or presentation thing yesterday, the feds kind of covered their portion of our Medicaid cost for loss, which is based upon the Medicaid cost support. So basically, if you take our total expenses multiplied by the census percentage for Medicaid, and then you take that away from the Medicaid revenues, you get your Medicaid loss. And then the feds will do a match because they will consider that WASS being certified public expenditures. And then they'll assign, usually it's in proportion to the federal medical assistance percentage will be the match. So it'll be 50% for 6323. And so this next June, that could be, I think we could be alignment for about nine million or so for pro share.
Wow.
But that's reflective of the Medicaid loss. I mean, you have to wait till last month for the fiscal year to get it, but it's, it's, you know.
But our pro share could go up substantially. So, I mean.
Yeah, and it'd be quite a bit over budget. So good news again for fund balance. Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. I mean, what's, yeah, I mean, if, last year, we didn't touch fund balance essentially. So if we can minimize the, how much we have to tap into fund balance through this increase of pro share.
We did budget 12 million, so yes.
Right. So if that nine, yes. Well, thank you, Chuck, for all your efforts to get this.
And for Jason's folks.
And for Jason's folks too. I mean, obviously, it's another example of the collaborative work. But thank you to everybody because this really, you just highlighted the significant financial impact of making sure we are really tight in how we do this.
And we'll get those delivered this afternoon because tomorrow, you know, is, would be the ultimate due date because 30 of those Saturday. So.
Yeah.
Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for the resources or all wellness activity. Scarecrow.
I'm, I'm moving to approve utilizing approximately $600 from the county's wellness fund to purchase supplies and supplies for the fall wellness activities, scarecrow contest in October as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Allison, you want to do the, so a rundown?
It's our annual, it's an annual event now. So everybody has already gotten their supplies from us and then they're off to the races on getting stuff done and over to us. And we'll work with Jude's crew to get it put in the area in front of assisted living and around the circle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So on the motion, Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're going to take that back to the public. Let's go to position, uh, second.
We're going to.
That's after though?
Yeah.
Yeah. So B and C, that. So now we're, all right, so we're already at the Simon event, so I'll, and I'll.
Yes, I quickly put together my update this morning. We had a busy week with the employee harassment discrimination training. We did long-term care Saturday night. So I was out here Saturday night with Julie and then Lisa Poole in for that. We are still, we, the invitations for the first years of service and NHAC award recipients will go out in a mail today. The advertisement is underway. No, it is not. The, sorry, I have so many things going on.
Give it time.
It's just, we had a lot of other things going on. We're doing implementation, the benefit module testing on our end. And then there was a lot of other issues behind the scenes that were done in preparation for today's meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Can you go to Chuck Nickerson?
As was already.
That busy, so.
Since Switzerland. We're never. Same thing as far as busy with UKG testing on the payroll processing time card side of things. Still working through some issues on that side. We're also trying to work with, while I think that mean got canceled as far as we don't have yet the nurse, the new nurse file template set up in the new system either. So we need to have that hammered out. We do have, we will be going to parallel testing coming up as far as nurses rolling out their pension goal three. So for October, well, really it's these October submission for September files will be submitting in the current version two and the version three. So it's okay. It's, we're all, we're all set. This will be like the, a, don't be truly alive test. It's a peril test. So, but it should go smoothly because we failed to test it successfully before with prior months data that retirement system asks us to send. So should be, but yes, it is almost the moment of truth as far as jumping off to a new system. So I'm sure it's a big thing for retirement system as well because they haven't had a upgrade to the system for a while.
It's probably necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little dated now. Medicaid cost, where we went over that, those will be delivered today. Work then will turn to the Medicare cost support. So, but we have a bit of time for that because that's the end of November for that due date. Again, just to, overall, the, the usual busyness, if we're going into the month following the quarter end. So it means that all the grant filings and everything like that, we do have the head of justice dis requesting information from county attorney's office and myself as far as regarding the, the formerly known as VOKA Grant Award because that was funded by ARPA through state funds.
VOKA, yes.
It's a longer VOKA because they're worried about the, on the federal level as far as the funds potentially being there. So the state is running it through ARPA funds instead, past their ARPA funds. So it's still the same basic parameters that we have to follow. But there, it's not a full-blown audit, other program or anything. It's just annually, they have like a review that's done. So it's simple, simple thing. So I'll be working with Megan McGowan to answer this problem. So it's just our normal thing. It's, it's fine. We do have a thing that the feds are asking in about treasury that while for ERA one funds, we could do 10% admin, they actually ends up being based upon the assistance that you pay out. And since unless you spend 30% plus by 9:30, they closed that program down on us earlier. So of course, we had much admin cost because we had to go into a new system. We had to start from scratch on this. And so software costs alone were like $518,000. 10% off of our actual system paid under ERA one was like four, would have been 440,000. So the, the feds all said we went over 10%, but they said if you justify it saying you need to have this overage so you could deliver the program, which is totally true. I mean, really, 77% of the admin fees of 660,000 were because of this uncored system.
Right.
Without that system, we'd have been killing it.
Process, yeah.
So I already re answered it this way a while ago during the summer. They came back and asked the questions again. So I just even expounded upon, you know, the, the response to try to make it even more easily determined that yes, our overage was needed to deliver the program. So see what treasury comes back with.
That put us at like 12 or 15%, right? I mean, what was our?
Well, what happened was the ERA two allowed for 20%.
Right.
And we had no problems there. We're, we're well.
Way under.
We're way under on there. But the problem was lots of the costs for the system weren't heard under ERA one, which had only a 10% admin threshold.
Highlight that, that the, I mean, the thing is, if you amateurize it between ERA one and two, we're still way, well under even at 10%. I mean, because our ERA two costs were probably.
ERA two admin's not bad, but we basically spent all, like within like 6,000 or something like that. Actually, they'll all be gone because of the admin fees with considering the internal labor and reporting.
Yes.
So that's all, all gone.
Right.
But we're well under 20%.
That's my point. So if you amateurize the.
But they're not, I tried to look at silos. They look at it in silos, not the program as a whole.
Right.
So, but I explained it all enough before under their previous inquiry that all these costs were necessary to deliver the program. So I guess they went back and square one and a half, or same thing again.
The truth is, we did try to have distributed a different way and we were about to state and they told us no.
And that's part of the narrative too that I led off with. So they, so the response is sent. It was like, dude, they only gave like a five-day turnaround time. So it's sent, it's due for like Tuesday.
Thank you for your efforts.
All set, Chuck?
Yes, thank you.
Going to go to Sheriff's Department. Let's see the sheriff's in.
Good. Good morning. So I think you all know that we're short-staffed in dispatch and it's pretty overwhelming for us over here. But on the good news is we have a new dispatcher starting to work for us. We're going to go in the non-public to talk about a few things, a couple of good ideas. And thanks to Allison and Chuck, we actually had a pretty good meeting about some fresh ideas to try to, try to get people to come to work for us. It's very frustrating. I feel real bad for the dispatches because just like anything else, they're getting, they're getting tired, they're getting burnt out. We can't afford to lose any more dispatches. Otherwise than that, we've been busy and that's it. Have a great week.
Thank you. Jason Henry.
Good morning, everybody. Couple of things going on. Friday, tomorrow I'll be in Concord with the Open Abatement Subcommittee talking about putting together next round of grants. Because that's, looks like it's going to be focused on housing. So we'll see how that goes. 121th Academy started this past Monday. As Chuck mentioned, the upgrade going on with the retirement system, since I sit on the board, that has been a huge project for them. We'll see how that goes. They're, they're nervous as well too with all this launch, but it's been a significant project for them. The Kami graduation is October 27th. And then lastly, tomorrow I have a Zoom meeting with all the superintendents on bail reform because I'm going down next week to testify with Representative Roy. It's kind of, who's from Rock, is kind of spearheading this. Where they're asking questions if they go to a magistrates and they do it on Saturday, you know, and they do on Saturday morning, what impact would that be on the jail? And again, that's going to be either staffing for us or if they're making do a person, that could be sheriff's department. So we're going to have a conversation referencing that and what it looks like. But it could be a significant impact on budgetary wise. And that's all I have.
Good. Thank you, Superintendent Robin Burnier.
Morning, everybody. Just a few things to report today. We were happily awarded $56,000 from the Department of Environmental Services for cybersecurity upgrades for our water and wastewater treatment plants. So we worked with Emily, we got the grant submitted and we got some money back. So that will come before you in the weeks to come to accept that. I hope that that will go forward. We also, as Commissioner McCoy mentioned, we met our goal for our Alzheimer's Walk. We did some various fundraisers around the county. We did some donations. So we're going to have that walk on Sunday. Looking forward to that. And that's it.
Great. Thanks for calling. Jude Gates. Want to do?
All's well in facilities operations. I don't have a whole lot new to, to report on. We're continuing on basically picking up where we left up last, last week and just going forward with everything. Nothing new really. Dealing with some issues pretty much in all of the buildings. So we've got a lot going on, but it's all going well.
Thanks, Jude. Jason Smith. You want to, Jason?
Good morning, commissioners. Just to follow with Rob and just really excited that we've reached our goal for the Alzheimer's Walk. And just wanted to say thank you for all of the county employees that have contributed to all the event planning and support with that. And thank you again, Commissioner Coil. Really appreciate your support with that initiative. In addition to that, I just want to also say thank you to Chuck and Allison for their contributions yesterday along with Kendra from Assisted Living and Jessica Wendell with the present, presentation to our visitors. It was a great time. I was planning on two hours, but as you can tell, it ended up being over three. So, but overall, it was really good. Staffing presently, we're using close to 70% agency travelers. So just as you're aware, staffing is also a critical state. We have two units that are still closed. Met yesterday with Wellesley Design for our hospice suites and our hospice suites are coming along nicely. The design, I will be sharing that information as soon as I get the updated presentation for you all. In addition to that, the strategic initiative for the future of long-term care here at Rockingham County, I will be meeting with one of the vendors who is interested in applying for or submitting a proposal to the RFP. So we'll be meeting with them tomorrow just to go over kind of the initial steps and I look forward to the next week where I'll be meeting with a couple more companies to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um, I think I got everybody there, right? Everybody in the room? Okay, so I think we're going to, first off, I'm going to ask is, we've got somebody on the phone. I don't know if they're a member of the public. The last phone number was 4111. Oh, it is? Is that what you said?
No, I looked it up.
Oh, okay. All right. So we're not really public. Okay. All right. So.
Are we, do you want to do new business? It's new business, old business, then from what comment?
Yeah, let's do that. So let's start, let's do new business first. Anybody have new business?
We just have that walk in and I move with.
I do, I have new business.
Okay.
So I can find out real quickly. Last week, we found out that the, the Rockingham County Democrats met at the Hilton. I had, and I don't know if, we should, we may have also had a, a text from the Rockingham County Republicans asking to use the Hilton. And I just want to find out because I planned on coming in last week to ask permission from the commissioners for the Rockingham Republicans to use Hilton. But when I found out that every Democrat had already done, had that meeting, I'm a little bit confused as to the process as to anybody that comes in that wants to use the facility. I, and you guys, tell me if I'm wrong, that's fine. I thought that any, any person that fills out that form to use the room, that form comes to the commissioners, so we would approve it. And if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. But I, I just want to find out because I have some concerns that if we have other organizations that come in that may not have the best reputations, are we going to have, you know, will we have Robin sign off on that? You know, it could be problematic is what I'm thinking. I don't know. And on top of that, we did have discussion on we could possibly waive the $75. That has to be waived by us. So I thought that anyone that wanted to use the Hilton could fill out the form, it would come to the commissioners, we would talk about it and note on it. But, but if it's, if you want to go a different direction, that's fine too. I'm not saying people can't meet. I'm just saying, I want to get a better feel for how this process is going to go.
I think when we crafted the policy, I think it has, because it's in a long-term care facility, I think Jason's name is on there as the point of contact and the front desk.
Okay.
I think if there was a waiver of money, I think, I think it would be disclosed, somebody could approach. But I think at that point, then that would come to the board. You know, I think for Jason, if we found out.
If it's for a civil purpose, nonprofits, there was no fee. If it was for government, there was no fee. If it was a for-profit, there would be a fee that would be assessed because they have already met here in the past and there was no problem with that. There, there was no need to go to the board as, as representation per the outline of the document.
Okay.
And I, my sense of it is, you know, if there is need for most nonprofits, because where there could be a waiver of fee was one, not for nonprofits or government groups, but for private entities. So that's the only time that the waiver would come to us.
Okay.
With respect to use of space, I assume there's a vetting process going through that if there, I assume we're not going to see every application or, but if there's a potential, and especially for groups that have historically used the space. But if there's some concern based on, I don't like, then it will.
Social media post or something.
Right. Then you will bring it to you, just like anything else. Like this is like we.
So we're going to pick and choose what kind of, from us. I'm just using an example of the Hells Angels. Wanted to meet at the Hilton. Jason, you're the, you're going to be the person who makes the upper down.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would be reaching out to all three of you to, to just let you know. With that being said, thus far, since I've been here, we've only had the Democratic Party, the Republican Party and Blood Drive. Those are the only organizations that have.
And that's cool. I have no problem with any of those. I'm just trying to figure out moving forward. Because we are a government entity and people feel that they, we're making this space available, how the process is going to work because.
And people feel that they, we're making this space available, how the process is gonna work because. I do have that concern. I've seen it in the town of Derry. Uh, and so if the. If it comes back where. A department head is gonna make the upper down decision, then when the media comes or whatever, then. You they contact and not us, although they'll come after us and talk to us, but they'll, they'll, they'll want kids to like.
Commissioners, we could, we could have a solution for this a little bit. When I looked on the, on the website for what that form looks like and where it's gonna go. It only says to call our main phone number. We can create an email address. We can share that email address on the website. With the form attached, they can send it in. We can have it go both to the commissioner's office and to Jason. So that way you don't, you know, one or the other can take care of it. Um, I have spoken to both the Republicans and Democrats working with environmental services. We've got them booked on the calendar.
Yes.
Um, the first and third Wednesdays of every month for. I went out to next June, cause you know, that was long enough at that point, but. Um, they are booked, they're gonna, we're gonna meet their needs um for AV and things like that. And environmental services is gonna take care of the setup of the room.
Okay.
Do that on the website, create that email address for them, which might make it easier for all of you.
Okay. Sounds good. What should we go to?
I, I think that we should amend the policy. And the uh, any requests that come in for use of the room should be signed off by commissioners. I think this could be potentially volatile. I don't think that we have any problem with. The people who were scheduled and who have been scheduled in the past. But I think this is, uh, it, uh, your point is taken that uh. It's a public facility. It is our responsibility to make sure it's being done right. And any application that comes in for use of the room should come in to for our signature. That's my opinion. That's what I think we should, and and. This, it's no criticism of how this has been handled because it's not laid out that way. But I'd like to amend the policy. To include confirmation by commissioners. Uh, this is not a, a room that should be used that frequently.
No, I mean, this is the residence of all these folks here. I just wanna bring up again, I feel bad because when um the Rockingham County Republicans ask me. I told them that I have to bring it up in front of the commission. So. That's the perception that I had originally. And this, this is why I brought it up. And I was just, I I I realized that maybe I was wrong. And when I found out that the Democrats were already scheduled. It didn't come in front of the commissioners. Not to say that we wouldn't allow it, but. I just wanted to find out, you know, I felt bad because I put Jason Borowski off for, for a couple of weeks. And I told him, listen, I have to. I can't arbitrarily do this without my total commissions checking in, so. But now that we've had a straight, I think I, I'm gonna agree with what you're gonna do. Then should, we should have the final responsibility. Just in case.
I guess the concern I have is the caveat is that we don't politicize. The approval process. So.
I, I agree. Politics should not be a part of.
I agree.
Of that decision.
That's why, I mean, it is, I think in that respect, it's better to be a little detached. Because. And then if there is, like, I, I trust, I guess there's two things by, um, I don't think we need to amend the policy. I think that Robin proposed a perfectly good um solution, which is we can view the applications. And if there is, in the course of reviewing, you know, anybody has any concern, then we can raise the issue to. Confirm or deny, and I, I trust in our department heads through their, they have concerns, they're gonna say, they're gonna send it up to, you know. Us and put it on the agenda, so.
Um, so for me, it's not a matter of trusting or mistrusting the department heads. Again, this falls into the category of. We get a request, and this is similar to my Arizona State, we had license plate things. We had the same issue come up. If it's. The skinheads organization, okay? Um. You gotta be really careful as to whether you approve it than I start. Uh, and that responsibility really lies on us liability wise. I wouldn't wanna put it on. Department. That's the only reason why I have brought that up. So I mean, you know, I, I agree with what you're gonna do. It should be. Should be us that just. And and I, and I agree with Commissioner Coyle that it should not be politicized. Like I said, I didn't think it would be in the aisle of the Democrats being here. Um, I just thought that we would have had, you know, we would have known about it. And said yes, and we're done. And uh. So I'm looking at it more with a liability type of things, not necessarily a trust or mistrust of the. So I don't know.
Cause I'd like to make a motion. I, I, I move that we amend the policy. Pending approval of the commissioners for each group that comes in.
I guess before we make that motion, do you think we should take, if we're going to. Partake in amending the policy, first of all, rather than making the motion here, what we should probably do is send it back. For some revisions and then review the revisions to adopt those revisions. But. Send, I mean. Do we wanna craft something that like? Eight groups, I mean, probably the easiest way to, you know. We won't, you know, this is a. Organization that is like accepting, we won't tolerate groups that promote hate speech or, you know. Um, ha, you know, promote violence or, you know, put some caveats in at the same time. I don't know. Um, because that would then say we're not. It'd be nice to put some param, if we're going to do this, put some parameters around it that says. These are the organization type of. Organizations we want to facilitate. And then it's like outlined clear in the policy if we're going into that process.
I'm okay with previewing the language uh before we make a motion to actually make the change of. I'd like to move forward with. Um, making the, that essential change. I, I would prefer to see language that was a little bit vague. That just says inappropriate groups or groups that we think are inappropriate to be meeting in this facility. Um, will not be allowed. I, I, or, or maybe nothing. And we'll just decide. Whether a group is, I mean, most groups they're gonna apply. I, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with. This is just really a stopgap. Just in case, and it falls on us anyway. Uh, it, it, it should not fall on the department heads. Uh, cause I don't want them criticized if somebody comes in and misbehaves. Uh, and you know, in retrospect, somebody you thought was gonna be just fine and and didn't turn out as fine as it part two. Uh, it, it falls on us. It should be our responsibility. I don't want any, any of that responsibility falling on the department.
Um. And to, to that note, oh, I just wanna add one other thing. We did allow. Uh, a group that came in, uh, not that long ago. And things got a little out of hand. You had to call the sheriff's department and he was a little bit messy. So if in the future, that kind of thing happens and then they, that same group applies again. And we have an denial, it's, it's not fall on us to make the answer that, okay? And it won't fall on the. To make that decision. That's how I'm viewing it. Um. I, I'm concerned about that as well. So I think it makes sense that we, we, we have to sign them up and just take care of that side of it. So maybe. Either the next meeting or the meeting after that, as long as we're not. Having any other people scheduled that come in, we can. Look at the policy and.
I just wanna see the applications and sign.
Yeah.
That we, that way we know who's coming in. I wanna make sure that someone's, if someone's coming in, that I'm at least aware that the group is coming in. I, I hate that. Did you know somebody was meeting there and I didn't know? I think I, I think we ought to know.
How do we protect against polit- politicizing the application process?
No different than all of the votes that we take every week.
Well. But from an organizational standpoint, I. I mean. I guess we're.
You're concerned? Are you concerned that?
I, I'm not saying that.
Republicans would gang up on a Democrat.
I mean, it's, it's.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think it is either, but it's, it's, this is the board now and I trust in the board here and now. That the right thing will be done. I really do. I don't have any issue. I don't have concern that you're gonna say, you know, but. I have to, you know, we're all here for you. We're establishing a policy now. That's gonna last. And so I, maybe it's putting in language that it won't be, this is where it gets. You know.
If you wanna craft something for us to review, to assist. Um, Allison, I, I, I welcome that. I, I, I agree with you.
Are gonna say no to the.
Right, right. You don't want. We don't want that to happen. I, I mean, I think that. Reasonable minds should just never let that happen. And we're gonna have more requests once the building is built. Uh, because that new facility is gonna be a little bit more attractive to people that will want to meet. Uh, and it actually, it'll be better because it'll be outside of the. Long-term care facility.
Right, right.
So, and that, that relieves some of the pressure of uh people being here that we don't want. You know, over there, it'll be different things. There'll be a lot more security and.
There's also gonna be a new policy for costing because.
Right, that'll change.
Yeah.
Well, policies can always be looked up and changed.
I, I agree, but if we can establish a policy that.
Yeah. So I think, I think if we're.
Well, we'll wait to see a revision. Allison, would you work on a revision?
Absolutely. Yeah, um, I just. I won't have it next week because I will be not at the meeting. I'll get it out.
It's not urgent.
Okay, but I'll, I'll get it done. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Thank you.
Uh, just the motions listed.
So I moved to approve utilizing approximately six thousand dollars of category, actually it's five thousand dollars of category two point three five. Of the ARB project funds. This was an amendment that happened after. Cost analysis happened after the. Um, it was originally six thousand. So, but uh, five thousand dollars of category two point three five of the opera. Project funds to pay for appreciation gifts for staff as recommended by the senior director.
Sorry. Most, I made a second, any discussion?
We, last year we did buys, this year it's nice to change it up. I think it'll, you know, be well received, so.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner, right?
Yes.
Now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? We have. Um, if you're on a phone, I think you hit star nine. To unmute. I'll give you a minute. If you wanna say something or not. Okay, I haven't seen movement there, so we're gonna wait, wait to, um, thank you, everybody. We're gonna go into non-public.
I moved to enter to non-public pursuant to uh. New HTRSA ninety one eight point three, section two personnel matters.
Oh, we have to go, we have to do the.
You know, I think we have.
Position repurpose, Allison.
I think we have one um administrative transfer. Department of Corrections.
We don't have that before us.
No, it's not on the agenda.
I, I got you.
It was sent over, it was sent over to Leila this morning, uh, cause I have to present it by the next commissioner meeting. It's just one, uh. One inmate was sent to Hillsborough County, um.
What's the date?
He went on the days today.
The twenty eighth.
Yeah, thank you. It was days ago.
I'm sorry, what was the date? The twenty seventh or twenty sixth?
It would have been. The twenty six.
Okay. So I moved to approve an inmate administrative transfer, uh, transferring from Rockham County. Uh, House of Corrections to Hillsborough County's House of Corrections dated September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
We're kinda out of order, but sure, second. Cause we have another motion on the floor to move to non-public.
Oh.
We didn't vote.
I'm sorry, I tabled that motion.
Okay.
I, I.
Just house.
Okay.
Okay, so seconded. On the motion, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
What should we go to?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now we're going into non-public.
So with that approved, I moved to enter into non-public pursuant to uh. Move HTRSA ninety one eight point three, section two personnel matters.
Second. Motion made and seconded, um, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
What should I do?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all the hard work you guys do. Good day.
I moved to approve a repurpose of two positions, LNA Weekender one to MNA Weekender one and LNA Weekender two to MNA Weekender two. Effective October eighth, twenty twenty three, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second. Discussion on that? Yeah, not on the motion, Bishop, right here?
Yes.
Bishop Doyle?
Yes.
I remember, yes.
I moved to approve two new titles, licensed care partner and medication care partner.
Second. You made seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
I moved to approve downgrading the personal care partner position to grade R zero five.
Second. Then you seconded, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Should I do?
Yes.
Well, yes.
I moved to approve the request to assign the medication care partner position to grade R seven at the first quarter executive committee meeting.
Second, made seconded, discussion? On the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Christian Gordon?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I moved to approve a one-time two dollar and fifty cent per hour wage adjustment for two current MNA certified personal care partners. PJ and MS effective October eighth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? On the motion, Bishop, right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
I moved to approve a one-time seventy five cent per hour decompression wage adjustment for two current wellness coordinators, DA. And AS effective October eighth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Yes.
Should I do?
Yes.
And I moved to.
Table in the next one?
Um, we don't, I don't think we can make a new one, but.
Just, there's another motion there, but I think we're not taking it out.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah. And I'm not even gonna move, I moved to a.
Second, second.